Members of the Kelly family that are here because of a resolution we're going to bring out this evening. Is there anyone else here that needs to speak to the council on any issues at this time? Okay. I would ask one of the council members, if you would, if you would introduce Resolution R 2020-08 for John S. Kelly III.
Opportunity honored. To do that.
Mayor, would you like me to read it?
So, Councilwoman Hart has introduced Resolution 2020-08. I'll let the city attorney read it, and then I'll call the member of the family forward at the end of this. We'll make a formal presentation.
Resolution R 2020-08, a resolution to recognize John S. Jack Kelly III. Whereas John S. Jack Kelly III was born in 1929 in Bardstown, Kentucky, to parents Victor L. and Mary Louise Kelly. And whereas Jack received his undergraduate degree from the University of Kentucky and later graduated from the University of Louisville Law School. And whereas Jack was a private in the United States Air Force where he taught navigation. And whereas Jack was a practicing attorney in Bardstown for more than 50 years, was considered a master trial lawyer and champion for the service of minorities on local jury panels. And whereas Jack purchased the Old Talbot Tavern in Bardstown in 1968, which his family still runs today. And whereas Jack was a founding board member of the Stephen Foster Drama Association and tirelessly served on the board for 30 years. Served as president of the Bardstown J.C.'s, was a founding board member of the Bardstown Industrial Development Corporation, a board member for the Bank of New Haven, and a board member of the local Red Cross. Whereas Jack was a member of the American Legion Post 121 for 73 years, was a member of the Knights of Columbus for 63 years, and was also a member of the Optimists Club. And whereas Jack was honored to receive many awards acknowledging his community service, including the 1997 Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year, St. Joe Prep Hall of Fame, the 2005 Tourism Pioneer Award, and the 2016 Chamber of Commerce Lifetime Achievement Award. And whereas Jack has been dedicated and loyal in his years of public service to the city of Bardstown will be greatly missed. Now therefore be resolved by J. Richard Eaton, Mayor of the city of Bardstown, that this resolution be spread upon the permanent official records of the city and that a copy thereof be presented to the family of John S. Jack Kelly III in recognition of his years of dedicated service to the city of Bardstown.
Thank you. And now I ask for a motion that we approve this resolution as read by our city attorney. Motion, Councilwoman Hart, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gibbs. Any all in favor, signify saying aye. Any opposed? Motion's carried. I would like to ask if one of the Kelly family members would come forward. I'd like to present this. I wanted to add some of my own comments, if you don't mind. I was fortunate enough to know Jack for well over 40 years. I worked with him on the Stephen Foster Drama Board. He and my brother were law partners for many years. I frequented their office many, many times and listened to Jack about the advice, politically and legally and so forth. And my first public job was in 1968 where I got the check where taxes were taken down. I'm doing it anyway, so I put my papers at the Talbot Tavern. Washing dishes, dusting tables, and so forth, which we got here with other owners at that time. It was a great experience and certainly didn't hurt me at 14 years old to get my start in public work here. Jack, as the resolution stated, gave back to this community in so many ways and so many organizations. And in addition to the drama, I participated in other organizations that he helped promote and really made a difference in this community. Quality of life that we've enjoyed and in our tourism certainly was a great spirit behind all that effort. So, very proud that you've taken this time this evening to do this resolution in honor of Mr. Kelly and certainly want to express our sympathy for the Kelly family, but certainly want to express our gratitude to the Kelly family for you all, him and us, Jack Kelly, all these years and pushing him along and making a good little push here and there. So, on behalf of the city of Bardstown, congratulations to Jack Kelly and all the Kelly family for being here tonight. Okay, let Jessica get in. I think we'll just move into that part of the agenda for now. Okay, Jessica, I'll get you, get settled there, and we'll let you talk about the change order for the, change order for the lagoon at the Jerry Riley Plant.
Yes, as a lot of the councilmen know, we've been working on major maintenance construction at the Jerry Riley Plant. We have noticed back in the winter that the liner for lagoon number one had started to float in group seeing tears. So, we've been trying to get together projects and remove the sludge from that basin and actually kind of undergo that feat. And this bid was, project was bid back in the spring. And once we've now got all the sludge removed and the contractors started working and trying to make, make sure that the bottom and the sides of that lagoon that had been in place for about 20 years were suitable and that we were setting ourselves up when we planned the new liner, that we were going to get good longevity out of that. And that's what we found is we couldn't just slightly regrate and backdry and get any, you know, rocks that might have been present and put a liner back down. What we found was the actual bottom of the basin was almost solid rock in some places. And they had used some shat rock and other points in their fill material. So, the material and what our condition that we found was not what we had hoped to find. So, in order to make sure that that lagoon liner does not have any abrasive places with rocks rubbing on it, there's a lot of weight that's on that with the weight of the water in that facility. And since the reason we're having to replace the liner is because of tears and holes, we want to make sure that we provide a good cushion and a good clay soil layer over that material. So, the contractor, and we had a due date alternate in the bid because again, you don't know what you have until you uncover it. You know, it's all buried and underwater for 20 years to see what we might need to do once we got in there. But again, we, because the material was not suitable for just some regrading, we had some credits for that to come back out. But we also found an area of suitable clay material, a borrow area, within on a property. So, I think I provided some pictures to the council to kind of show you what the bottom of that basin looked like and, you know, why we're having to be forward with this, with this change order. And I also provided a photo of the borrow area and what that pit looks like. It's good clay dirt. We've set any large rocks, pulled them out to the side. And the material is actually going back in really well. They're able to provide a bit smooth clay cushion, about six inches of material over top of that bottom and to run a nice foundation for this liner to go back in. The change order price actually does include the addition of a felt layer over top of that, so that will go between the soil layer and the, the actual lining of the lagoon. So, the change order price is an actual addition of $41,160. And again, I think this is really what needs to happen in order to make sure that we have a product that's going to last 20-plus years without any... It's such an ordeal if you want to get in there and do this once, you don't want to come up in here and do it again. So, are there any specific questions the council has?
Just one, Jessica, and I think it's just to highlight the need for this change order, really. Normally, as far as the life or the longevity of that lagoon, what's the timeframe when you'd normally have to go in there and clean it out? Not to change the lining again. And we understand that this money goes towards ensuring that it lasts for that 20 years plus. But what's the normal rate that you go in there and actually do a cleaning?
And cleaning, historically, at the Town Creek Lagoon, we've not been cleaning that lagoon, but I think one, it was cleaned once. Lagoon one was cleaned in 2007. Hasn't been cleaned since, since it might have been in operation. We just cleaned lagoon number two for the very first time this spring. So, that's since the 70s, late 60s or the 70s. Now, I do expect that we will be doing more sludge removal at the Riley Plant, more so than the Town Creek Plant. And that is because when the plant was built, a phosphorus limit was added to that permit for that facility, which requires us during certain times of the year to add a product, to add alum to, to the, to the process, which creates a lot of additional solids that fall out. And that additional alum also is more inert. So, it kind of almost makes it a biologically neutral in some ways. So, you don't get the same continual breakdown. It's just kind of as asked around in other facilities across the state. And folks that do this for a living, you know, cleaning needs to come down. And they are also seeing that other small communities who've kind of implemented easy de-saladings have found that to be the case. Again, without that limit of a phosphorus limit. And we're lucky enough that we only have to meet that limit during certain times of the year and when the East Fork River is below a circuit flow rate. So, when the river's running really low, it tends to come on next when there's hydrophosphorus impact due to other non-point source contributors. You know, we as a community in the wastewater plant, because we have a permit, we're asked to tighten down as much as we possibly can. So, that's create, this is kind of the unforeseen consequence of that.
So, I guess, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was getting at, is that this isn't something that you go in and that you can inspect every four or five years. In other words, that's, that's the reason to spend this extra money to ensure that it's going to last for that 20 years plus.
That's exactly right. Under working operating conditions, this lagoon is full of water. And we, those operating levels go up and down, but they don't, we don't drain them. We do go out on and do a sludge judging every year. And we go out in a giant boat and have a mechanism called sludge judge that drops, almost like a plum bob and a little scoop, that measures the depth of the sludge in the basin. And we do that kind of in a grid pattern to somewhat gauge how much sludge we're accumulating in a basin. Again, it is dynamic, you know, there's times that it's more, that a microbiology is more active and, you know, and with the aerators and the basin, you know, you're going to get valleys and humps and stuff. So, it's not perfect, you're on a boat, it's not exactly the same spot every year. But we try to gauge the accumulation.
I drove out with Jessica a few weeks ago and inspected this with her, and it's pretty evident, the pictures are really better than what you can see from the distance. So, pretty evident that this is needed. So, it's good that we have a credit against this change order to help us there. Any other questions of Jessica? If not, I would ask for a motion then to approve the change order at the Jerry Riley Plant for Easy Construction Company for $41,160.
Second, Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Jones, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second, Councilman Williams, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. You want to go through these next two real quick, Jessica?
Absolutely.
A bit tab from the PAA improvements.
So, this must, is our turn for doing sewer work, apparently. We have bids that we received on Thursday for converting, to making improvements to our per seating acid feed at both the Town Creek and the wastewater plant. The bids came in, and the low bidder is Pace Contracting in the amount of $232,000. We did get three bids from three reputable contractors. And you can see both the low and the second lower are right there, pretty close together. The Kentucky Engineering Group is a consultant for the city on this project, and they are familiar and have worked with Pace and recommend that we award to them.
Any questions for Jessica on this recommendation to award the PAA system improvements to Pace Contracting for the low bid of $232,000?
I have a quick question, please. Any idea why that one is so high? I mean, I assume we're comparing apples to apples, the Smith contractors?
I, I'm not sure. I didn't go in, since we had two that were so close, I didn't wire about why. It was one month's sum, so I didn't have a great talent.
Jessica, have you mentioned in the past that sometimes some people give outrageous pay because they don't really want the project?
Sometimes that does happen, and they'll thought they have plenty of work to keep them busy. And they'll go ahead and bid something pretty high with good profit margins in there. And if they get it, great, it, you know, kind of compensates if the other work doesn't pan out. But it could be they were just busy and they put some numbers together and thought, hey, if I get it, great. Maybe they have higher overhead. I know Smith is a pretty large, for a pretty large construction company.
You've done work for them before, too, haven't you?
Yes, they actually did a good job. They received the, they did the work at the Town Creek Plant most recently with the upgrades through the facility and the new mock screens. They did that project.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to recommend the approval of Pace Contracting for the bid of $232,000 for the PAA system.
Well, I have a motion by Councilman Shekels, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Second, Councilman Buckman, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify saying aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, Jessica, the last one is the request from Lurue County Water District to up their monthly water purchasing contract with us.
Yes, Tim Bartley of Lurue County Water District reached out to me and asked if we would consider increasing their maximum water sales that they can purchase through the city of Bardstown. They actually have 70 different suppliers that they buy from. And they are looking to purchase some more water from Bardstown. And they are pretty pleased after they were initially had a lot of concerns with when we made the change to fluorine. And now that we've been, made that change for about two years, they're really liking how that's working within their distribution system. And would like to change more of their system over to Bardstown Water. And that's one of the reasons they're just having a lot of success with that water. Their current agreement, I believe, has a maximum monthly purchase of $3 million. And they would like to request up to $6. They don't think they will be at $6 any time in the next couple of years, but they didn't want to have to come back in, in two or three years and ask for that increase. So, they'd like to go ahead and make that $6. $6 is what, I believe, is in the current agreement with the city of New Haven as well.
Can we handle that, Jessica? No problem?
Yes, we should be able to meet that demand.
Any other questions of Jessica on this request?
I'm going to, I don't know if this is proper or not, but what if we had a really dry summer and that lake's way down? What happens if we can't meet that demand for these people that...
And keep in mind, that's $6 million a month. So, that is not like on a daily basis. We generally can produce on peak months in the summer. Right now, we're at about a half million a day. So, if you think about that, that's a pretty small increase. Obviously, if we get into a major, major drought, everybody's going to be, there could be a water shortage, and we have a protocol in place in our ordinance for water shortage or water emergency. And we would ask that people reduce their use, you know, non-critical uses. And that would apply for Lurue, for all our sellers and customers.
Any other questions? Then I would ask for a motion then to approve the request from Lurue County Water District to increase their contract from $3 million per month gallons of water from the city of Bardstown to $6 million gallons per month for water.
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilman Hibs, is there a second?
Second, I'll say.
Second, Councilman Shekels, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Jessica. Okay, next on our agenda is our HRB recommendations, and I'm going to take the liberty to move COA 20-137. That's Ron Esterall's. I'm going to move yours up first in the agenda so that you all can... I'll let, I'll let the city attorney kind of talk about how we're going to do this.
Yeah, we did this.
We probably should try to spread out if you can. I'm asking everyone to social distance if you can. So, the council's going to address this COA because the HRB there was a tie on the motion, so there was no decision made, so that's why we're meeting this evening. We're going to let Mr. May make a presentation on his behalf, and then we'll let the historical board make a presentation on their behalf to the council. And then the council will take it up at that point. And we typically give 15 minutes for each side to make their presentation, if that's adequate. We think that should be adequate. So, we'll go ahead and let you all make your presentation.
Okay, thank you there, Mayor. My name's Bob Waters, and I work with Ron. I'm Ron's attorney with the company. And I apologize for a little bit muffled. Still not accustomed to talking through one of these things.
If you stand enough distance from us, I think you can take your mask off and speak to us.
Sure. I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm going to ask you all approve this and give a strategic occupancy for Bullets Wire. This is a very important business. Ron has put an awful lot into it. And I believe that if you take a look at this whole package of what we have there, you'll find that, that the, what we've done with the construction, with the renovation of the building, which was a mess when Ron bought it. But he, everything that he has done has accentured the, the historical significance and the beauty of the building, using, you know, natural, the natural wood, natural brick. And it's, it's a showcase of the building in it. If you have an opinion, but you haven't been there, I know, I recommend that you go and take a look at it. But the, the, the problem where we're at now, the reason that we ran into a hiccup with the Historical Review Committee pertains to a, the exhaust fan. And what we need, you know, for the pizza ovens and et cetera, is, is you need a, you know, professional exhaust fans. Awesome exhaust fan, does a good job. But you got to have that ductwork, and you got to exhaust that to the outside of the building the most effectively and efficiently possible. Now, you'll see in the, if you take a look at these pictures, that somewhat Lurue structure that you'll see on that first picture is the exhaust fan or the exhaust ductwork. And it exits the back of the building, goes, you know, straight up and exhaust, exhaust out. And the question presented is, well, how about instead of doing that, going through the middle of the building? That would be a considerable mistake. And it's not just our opinion. I mean, even, even, you know, your own engineer, you know, Adam Harlow took a look at it. He has proved it, and he said this is the way he would have done it. If you go through the center of that building, then first of all, you have the exhaust structure in the interior, in the interior of the building. So, if you had, if you had any kind of leak or something, you would be right there with, with the BS, with the people. But remember, the whole goal with exhaust is to get it out, get it out of the building safely and efficiently. Safety of people is always a paramount thing. But also, that second floor mezzanine is beautiful. And, and it is, it's a beautiful structure. To put this exhaust through there would compromise safety because you would not be able to have proper egress to the stairway or with the stairway. And so, it would not, you would, you would end up not being code. Obviously, there can be exceptions to code, but that's, is that really what we want? And so, it's a better construction. It comports more with safety, and it's beautiful. I would also like to point out with some of these pictures here, these are all pictures that Ron took just in the last couple of days. If you take a look at this exhaust, exhaust ductwork here, you'll see that it's, this is in an alley. It is not visible from any highway. In fact, it's only visible from a small section of the alley itself. Most of the alley is not visible. And it's visible in this photograph. And look around it. I mean, the, the electrical and mechanical structures for the adjacent building, to me, this, I, this is opinion, but they look rather unsightly. I don't see that the exhaust structure here does anything deteriorate from, from the appearance. Moreover, other structures right here in Bardstown feature, featured the same kind of exhaust structure. You see that on the next page, that's 131 North Third Street. And that's from Plage, which of course is a main highway. All right. The third picture, this is, this is the front of Bullets Wire. And you can see it's, it's beautiful. There's obviously, you know, there's nothing that's visible. And, and if you thumb through some of the rest of the pictures, you'll see it's, it's the same thing. Now, we, we see in the same alley, just in the next block over. I mean, there are some very unsightly constructions of exhaust fans that have been there for some time. And by comparison, what we're talking about is really very nice. We've also, you know, you know, in order to try to compromise with, with the Historical Review Committee, well, you know, is there any kind of decorative feature you would like on that, on that exhaust structure? I think it looks pretty good as it is, but if there's something else with you now, you're certainly willing to do it. Ron has invested a million and a half in this project. And I think the employment, forecast employment, 20, 25, is that right, Ron? Roughly. And it's a showcase, and we need that in Bardstown, you know. And so, I really think this is, is an important project. And we were pretty surprised when you, when you have an approval from the city's own engineer who, who says this is the way he would do it, when you consider everything, when you consider personnel safety, when you consider the, you know, the purpose of the building, the historical ambiance of the building, which is primarily interior, okay? And then you look and say, well, you know, you would have to destroy that historical ambiance of beauty on the interior of the building in order to take this exhaust structure off of the back of the building in the alley. And it, and it would still have an alley full of some pretty ugly mechanical structures from adjacent buildings. So, in the grand scheme of things, we really think that, that what we're doing, what we're asking you to approve comports with and supports respect for the historical ambiance of downtown Bardstown. And we're not in any way opposed to that kind of thing. And we don't understand where the opposition came from. And we tried to kind of, there was a hearing. Ron tried to understand where the opposition was coming from, and it really couldn't, couldn't tell us other than, well, we don't like it. And then one lady actually started crying in the hearing, which was awful. So, Ron has tried to do... So, Ron has tried to do something really nice here. And I really think that this will benefit the city in a major way. You're gonna love the pizza, I mean, certainly I see some pizza eaters here, I know you guys love this pizza. And you would love the lasagna. I mean, it's a great building, it's a great business, these are good people, they put a lot of money to try to do not only a business as profitable, but something that, that highlights the, the beauty, the historical significance of Bardstown. Ron has, with, with his other business across the street, he has a working relationship with Heaven Hill. They, they, when people take a tour of Heaven Hill, they're encouraged to come to downtown Bardstown and get a coupon that they can use at, at Bullets Barbecue, when the winery's open, we have a winery as well. We're trying to facilitate getting people into the downtown. And I think you'd be very, very proud of what he's done and what we're trying to do. And this exhaust vent, I don't believe at all that it tracks from the historical beauty of downtown Bardstown. Again, it's not even visible from any highway. If you, if you try to find this, you have to go to a, just a small section of the alley to even see it now. So, with that, I would invite any questions that you have, Ron, maybe something I don't know, Ron would be glad to, to answer. And we, we ask you to, we're all, we look at it like we're all on the same team. We're trying to do something for Bardstown that, that will make you people proud, I think you would. This business and these good people that are working there. So we ask you to, to accept the advice of your, your own engineer, which comports with Ron's engineer and give Bullets Winery a certificate of occupancy. Any questions?
We probably have several questions, I don't know whether we ought to do the questions from, from Ron then now or wait till HRB makes their presentation?
Go ahead.
I think it would be appropriate to go ahead and ask questions now and then may I follow up questions, you know, subsequent after I hear from Mr. James.
I've got several, but go ahead if you all have any that you want to start with.
I'll, I'll go ahead and start and welcome Mr. Waters to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in. I guess where I would have to start, it's not really a question, but it's kind of a statement as far as you're, you're asking us to approve the certificate of occupancy, that's really not our, our responsibility, that's code enforcement. So what we're here to do is to approve or deny the HRB's recommendation, to deny the, the application. So it has, it really has nothing to do with the certificate of occupancy. So that's, that's, that's one thing.
And to be clear, Councilman, no, there was no denial or approval from, from, from the historical review board, there was just no recommend, it came to us with no recommendation, so at this point it's up to the council.
It's up to the council, but I just wanted to make clear that CO is not our responsibility.
I appreciate this. And just to be clear also, we passed all those. There's no code violation, code policy of any kind.
Do you all have a certificate of occupancy for the building from our local code enforcement officer?
My understanding, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that that has been, that that has been recommended by Adam, but that before it can actually be issued, there, there, next you have to review by the historical review commission. And that's where it stands right now. But there's no code reason, mechanical reason or engineering reasons hold up to the occupancy, that's my understanding.
Well, I could probably argue a couple of those points as far as what could hold up a code review of that particular, particular application, but I also wanted to make a point that as far as you were stating, the city's hired engineer actually agreed with the application or agreed with the installation. We were looking for, from the city's standpoint, we were looking for from the engineer, a statement that whether or not that this installation could have been done in different ways. So by my understanding and what I've seen from his statement is that he actually verified that it could be done in different ways. So that, what I understand there, that's, I think that's what we were looking for as a city, is just to, to understand the installation and see if it could have been done in, in other manners. In other words, if the, if the structure itself could have been modified to allow the exhaust system to go in as the HRB would like for it to have gone in. So, and, and also, you know, in that fact, in the fact of the matter of what we've made other companies or other businesses do. And I understand fully this, from me, we, we do not want to deter a business, especially as yours, from downtown Bardstown that is not down the chain. Now, I think that as far as I'm concerned, you know, we want to try to be as fair to everyone, you know, in the downtown area that is covered by the HRB rules as we possibly can. So what I understand in the past, that we have limited other businesses that have wanted to do the same thing in the same manner and have, they have incurred those extra costs to, to do that in that, in that fashion. So, and to, to allow, you know, your company or to allow you guys to do that, that very thing, you know, wouldn't be fair to the rest of the business owners downtown. But, you know, we, we appreciate, I appreciate, appreciate what Mr. May is trying to do for downtown open business, you know? Lord knows we need, you know, we need those downtown businesses, we need those restaurants. So we're not at all trying to deter or trying to, you know, hold that aspect of it up. I think with the council and with the HRB, what we're concerned with right now is that we're being fair as a whole to the community and to the rest of the business owners down in town.
Okay, thank you. And my understanding from Adam's recommendation is that, that if you did do it in the way that HRB wanted, you would have a situation in which you would either render the mezzanine and second floor unusable or you would, in order to use it, you would, you would be stuck with compromising on egress.
I understand.
And, and that will be a code violation that we would have to come before you and say, well, can you, can you excuse that? And, and we also think it would destroy the ambiance of that area, so.
And just, so I understand, just so it's clear for me, what would the code violation be that, that you would incur by placing them inside a building? Is it blocking a stairwell or a fire exit?
There's a certain amount of space that you have to have for stairways and you would, you would, you would not be able to achieve that completely. You would have a smaller, have a smaller egress area for stairway.
Okay. Personally, you know, I've looked at it and as far as qualifications, I don't have engineering qualifications as far as HVAC is concerned. That's why we involved a professional engineer to look at the system and give us an opinion as to whether it could be installed differently or with, in different means.
Let me ask you a question, didn't the engineer say when he came that you could?
Excuse me, excuse me, we're, we're not taking comments with the public at this time, we're dealing with this testimony here.
David, I may before we get too far away, listen. The engineer did find that he felt that it could have been done a different way, but for him to have been conclusive as a professional engineer, he would have had to have seen the job before, pre-construction. And that's within a professional engineer in the state of Kentucky or the United States. So if he did say it could have been a, done a different way, you know, his joke to me was, you could have bulldozed it and started over for that matter. So he said, anything could be done, but he said, what I would have done is exactly what was done. He said, it is my experience that as quickly as you can, you go out and you go up and this is a, a good job. He said, if you go up through the second floor, through the mezzanine, he said, chances are that you'll render that useless and we would not be able to use that.
That's not, that's not a business for.
Okay, well, that's what he said to me.
But I would, I do want to be clear that had you sought approval for this before you did the work, instead of coming here to ask, I guess forgiveness, instead of asking permission to start with, we would be in a whole different situation. You could have seen it before it was done.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to ascertain is that, you know, that, that if that process had been completed upfront, then those other opportunities would have been, you know, presented to you to do that, just that.
So, and, and I agree with both of you, but let me add this to that. There were hood designs that were submitted to the city of Bardstown, to Logan Spalding's office from the hood installer. At no point did those, did those installation diagrams show that the hood would go up to the center of the building? None of it. So for us to even start our installation, a hood application had to be presented to Logan Spalding, which it was, and our hood installer was given the okay to go ahead, knowing that it was not going to the center of the building. So, for me, being a professional, I would possibly inaccurately assume that the person that's in charge of the safety and the building codes in this entire city in this area would probably know more about it than anybody else in this town. And when he gave our hood installers the go-ahead to build it the way that it showed on our design, which was out and up, that's a green light.
Well, Mr. May, if I may, again, that office doesn't adhere to what the HRB rules are, so.
Fair to me. Man, let me add something to that. On three different occasions, I talked to Logan Spalding and I asked him and said, are we ready for a certificate of occupancy? And he said on three occasions, clearly, concisely, three times, Ron, you're ready, but the mayor has told me not to give it to you. Three times. Three times he has said that. And I told the mayor that.
But it was because of, if, if that did occur, I mean, that was because of the unwillingness to file with the HRB ahead of time and obtain a COA permit to do just that. And that's what I understand, is that correct, Mayor?
So, I don't understand the issue. If we would have asked before and asked permission and done an application through the HRB, which I've never had to deal with that before in my life in any other city. It seems like to me that just going through the building inspector, the guy that tells you what the code is and what you can and cannot do, correct me if I'm wrong, would suffice.
That's not the way it's set up here. We have a historic review board that governs all the exterior changes that are done in the historic district. And that district is a large area and it's been in place for nearly sixty years, so.
And I have talked with people in Frankfurt, professional engineers, and they said that Frankfurt does not recognize that. The safety of the patrons supersedes anything.
And I'm gonna read to you, I could give you a whole lot of background right here, Ron. This, as I told you the other day, this is your third property that you've either owned or managed in the historic district. Your previous building across the street, you've had dealings with the historic review board, correct?
Yes, because we had to have a similar exhaust to install.
Right, and that, that was a very similar situation where you, you put it in without the approval of HRB. They cited you for it, you had to come back and apply for it and you told them that it couldn't be done any differently, but they took you for you were. They didn't hire an engineer like we did in this case. So that, in my opinion, was a mistake on their part, they made two mistakes. They just didn't get any expert opinion written or otherwise on that one. So that, in my opinion, is a mistake. Let me back up here a little bit, kind of give the audience some background on how this whole thing has evolved. Some of this came from your own supplemental to us. The email that you gave us from Logan Spalding, May 16th, he tells you in that email that you were already doing construction without permits. May 16th, is that correct?
Yes.
So you were, you were already doing construction without even a building permit.
Well, how would you define construction?
What his email says, he said you were putting up a high wall. And he says clearly in his email, you need to stop Ron until you get your permits. So if you look forward, you've got a permit on July 17th for planning and zoning, which for, was for interior alterations only. That's what your permit is for on July 17th. Nothing related to exterior. You are required by planning and zoning to have both an interior and an exterior permit. When you, your application, you, instead of signing exterior or interior, you, you noted that it was a tenant fit up. And so the permit that you got from planning and zoning on the 17th was for interior only. No exterior alterations. On the 24th of July, roughly two months after Logan told you to stop?
Let me stop and then back up if we may. When I talked to the planning engineer, he said that those are not structural changes. Those are not putting a ductwork up that's not a structural change to the outside. He said it is not.
Well, that's not how our historic review board, that's not how planning and zoning review. You have to get both permits if you're gonna make any structural changes on the outside.
It's not a structural change. That, that is, so I want to be clear, I do not agree that it is not a structural change.
Oh, excuse me, but it says for permit for exterior alterations, I'm sorry, structural. It said for permit for exterior alterations is also required, you never got that, so. Now Logan issued you a permit on July the 24th. And the second paragraph states, this authorization does not release the applicant from complying with additional local ordinance requirements. So it doesn't release you from complying with the historic district.
Well, it looks like to me that we've been conflicting information because.
I got it here in writing.
Fine, but I also have an approved application to install it. I just don't want to get past that question.
I'm gonna ask you another question. So, within two months of Logan telling you, you don't have your permits and to stop work until you have your permits, you go through the process of getting your permits. Now, we cited you on December 6th. December 6th, 2019, that this was a violation of the historic review board. You have ignored that citation for eight months, whereas you didn't ignore the building code enforcement guy's citation or request.
What was that citation?
Not a citation, when he told you in his email to stop construction until you get your permit. You did not ignore that for eight months, you got in line and did it for then two months. So why have you ignored the city's citation for eight months?
What was the city's citation?
You noticed a violation of the, of the exterior alterations that was hand delivered to you.
I get, I get so many that kind of.
Well, this was a citation that was hand delivered to you, telling you that you were in violation of the historical review board and you ignored it for eight months. Then you come to us and say, I'm ready to open, let's go. But that's not how it works, you gotta go through the processes. So why did you ignore us for eight months?
Because I sent an application through Logan Spalding and I think that the safety of tenants and the building code supersedes anything from an HRB and I've had everybody from Frankfurt tell me that.
Well, that's, you know.
Well, I.
You still have to go, you have to go through the process. These are, this is an ordinance that requires you to do that, you're in the historic district, it's a party, you totally ignored it. Negligence on your part, in my opinion, ignoring this for eight months. And now you're saying, well, just make this happen. That's just not the way this stuff works. And the engineer's opinion says, that, you know, he says in conclusion, that an altered method of installation could have been utilized. He didn't say it couldn't happen.
He said also that it could have rendered the second floor useless.
He didn't say that. He said it would impact the space and so forth, but sure, if you have to enclose some ductwork in this room, you're gonna take up two feet, two feet, you know?
There's not that much room at all. You, you act, you actually, you've not been in the building. None of you have, Rochelle has. And Rochelle saw it and Rochelle understood completely, 100% of the time, and she agreed that if you put that ductwork up. Well, that's what she said. You said, I, I said, do you see the problem? You said, I do.
I see what you created the problem to be, but that is not.
So if you run ductwork up through that floor, you can not.
You haven't, you haven't presented anything in writing to that effect to us.
I gave you pictures of it.
That's pictures, that's not an engineering report. We've got an engineer's report that says it could be done, it doesn't say it can't be done.
It's eighty-six inches. It's eighty-six inches total. You have to have a forty-four-inch heat press, correct? For safety. There's no way that you can get forty-four inches out of that, no matter how you cut it.
We don't have anything in writing to support that.
I guess you won't take my word for this.
But let me also tell you, to your point about everything's ready to go in this figure of occupancy, the inspection that was made by Logan Spalding on August the twenty-fifth has thirteen issues still needing to be corrected before his certificate of occupancy can be approved.
That's all, they're done?
Well, he hasn't inspected it yet.
I, I've talked with him on the.
And one of them specifically says. One of them specifically says that there's no cleanouts in this exhaust system that is required.
He said that would not keep us from.
Well, that's required by code.
He said that would not keep us from, and also.
It says right here on this inspection, cleanouts, rear exhaust needs cleanouts.
Mayor, your engineer said I didn't need a hood. Your engineer said I don't need an exhaust hood. Your engineer said I didn't need the ductwork at all.
I don't see that in this.
Well, that's what he told me.
And he also notes, he also notes.
Did he say that or not? He did.
In his report, though, he also speaks to these cleanouts. And you told him they would be put in shortly.
And they will be.
Well, they're not in there now, and Logan is, there's thirteen issues here that he's on his inspection that.
Everything that he wanted except for the cleanouts are done.
But he hasn't inspected it and signed off on it. Is that right?
No, because he said you told me not to.
He can inspect any time he wants, as far as I'm concerned.
He told me that you said do not give those.
I've never had a conversation with Logan until today. That's how I got this information.
Okay. Well, I don't see Logan Spalding as being dishonest.
So I'm just showing you one of the things we've got here.
Man, I'm not trying to cut you off or anything like this, but could we hear what we're saying?
Yeah. So anybody got any more questions for Ron?
May I approach? This is Logan Spalding's phone number, and if anybody would like to get their phone out to check it. The phone number is five zero two, two four nine, zero six, zero one. That's his mobile, and his office is five zero two, three four eight, one eight six two. This came directly from Logan Spalding on Tuesday, September fifteenth. Who would like to read it?
Great, now get straight with the city. Once that happens, I will stop by, place stickers, figure your occupancy, and you can open. Figure your occupancy.
How many people you can have safely. So my text to Logan Spalding was, I showed him and I said, I've got it all done. And Logan said, great, now get straight with the city. Once that happens, I will stop by, place the stickers, figure your occupancy, and you can. So.
But then in our conversation you and I had, you had not even gone through over the application process of HRB, and I said, you've got to do that. That is an ordinance.
Apparently Logan Spalding doesn't think so.
Well, he doesn't patrol HRB, so. There's two different issues. There's building codes and there's historic review board.
But would we agree that that is what Logan Spalding texted?
Yes.
But within that text, and I'm just trying to clarify, it says get straight with the city. I mean, doesn't, doesn't that include what we're talking about here tonight?
Read above if you read.
Getting straight with the city.
Read above if you would.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'd like to add, Mr. May, is that.
What you said to answer your question, yes.
Mr. May, can, if I can ask, I'm just looking at this notice of violation from December sixth, and it specifically says that you must come to City Hall to fill out the, on the historic preservation page defines to be appropriate to fill out. They were to be completed by January second, twenty nineteen. And it was hand-delivered to you by the code enforcement officer, who I believe had a conversation with you that day. So I guess I'm trying to understand why you're telling us that you're still, for lack of a better term, ignorant of the fact that these statutes, that this ordinance exists when this notice of violation lays out the stuff that you were to take back in December of twenty nineteen. And that you've only come to take them now, when it's suddenly created a problem for you as opposed to dealing with it upfront.
I'm trying to think if I can remember that. When the code enforcement agent came. She, yes, she did. She said that. She also said.
She's visited you more than once, though, right?
Numerous times.
Right.
Numerous times.
Right.
For the offensive umbrellas, the vario permit that doesn't.
But you've applied for various other things after you've gotten notice of violation. So you do understand the process.
Correct.
And you just elected not to, or you didn't want to? I mean, I'm not really clear why this time was different than other times.
When I was told by Logan.
Or in the alternative way, you didn't seek the application to start with, I guess, because, go ahead. But, but you were, you got this separately. And it does say that historic review board approval required. That's what I'm asking.
Well, and something else, too. That's not even, that was sent to, that's not even who I am. That legal notice or whatever it is from the, was for Bardstown Holdings and for one twenty-six North Third Street. It wasn't even me. So it may have been supposed to be me, but every bit of information that was on that was wrong.
What is, is the subject property, one twenty-four?
One twenty-four North Third Street. That's right here.
The one that we got on June second?
No, December sixth, twenty nineteen.
Says unauthorized work is exterior overhead ventilation system added without HRB approval. So you got this notice eight months ago, and you disregarded it.
It was done.
No, you haven't. You just now got in front of the HRB last month.
What I'm saying is the work was done. The work was done eight months ago.
It was unauthorized.
It was authorized by Logan Spalding.
Not this one. That's why we're having this discussion. This is totally separate from.
Well, let me ask you a question. What's the resolution?
Well, let's listen to, let's let H, let's, let's HRB make their. Yes.
Okay. So, hi, everyone. So today we're here to discuss basically why COA twenty dash one thirty-seven is being brought before the city council. I'm basically here to ask that you deny the application to keep the hood as it is installed currently. There are several reasons why that I'm requesting that you all consider to do this, and we're going to start with exhibit A that I provided for you guys. This is already been mentioned tonight, but we're going to talk about it again. The notice of violation for one twenty-four North Third Street is for the hood installed without HRB approval on December sixth, twenty nineteen. Please note, the hood has been installed since this time. We've been trying to resolve the situation without success, and the applicant has almost had, basically around a year to resolve these issues, or eight months. Basically, as the mayor said. But he has not resolved these issues. So we're going to go on to basically, the reason for denial, and I think this is extremely important, you pay attention, is listed in exhibit B. These are actually the HRB guidelines for mechanical equipment, trash collection areas, and outdoor storage areas that are actually listed on application twenty dash one thirty-seven. So this states why the installed hood does not meet HRB regs. So ME one, which is the first regulation under that section, states to locate mechanical equipment behind buildings and completely screened from public view, okay? So we define public view as any interior view that is visible from any street or alley. The hood definitely is buried, is old from both multiple streets and alleyways. There's one alley that goes right behind all of those buildings, right there at that location.
What's the second? What, where can you see it from the second? You said the alley, but what was the second one you said there were two?
There's Fletchey Street and then.
You can't see it from Fletchey. You can't see it. Well, I, I'm saying right now you can't see it.
You can see it from Forest Street, but also the public way is. That's, that alley and that parking lot has been considered the public way on numerous other applications for the very same thing of other restaurants on that street. It's been treated the same exact way as she's talking about.
What about the Mexican restaurant, the ducks out the back?
I'm not speaking to that right now. I'm speaking to the public way here.
Okay.
So ME three states to locate mounted equipment such as vents, exhaust vents, on rear side elevations that are not visible from the street. So we've already defined that and discussed that, and that's the requirements that we're basically talking about that don't meet the criteria in which the hood is installed currently. But the reason I'm so adamantly asking tonight for you to deny this application actually goes far beyond the simple fact that this is, the applicant is acting without approval and chosen for almost eight months to not rectify the situation that we're reviewing right now. For over twenty years, all HRB regs have stated that HVAC and mechanical equipment is to be internal on those businesses, and we've required that. This means that every other business on that block has been made to put their hoods and vents internally, not to be exposed to the outside of that particular building. So all of these businesses and different buildings with different functions, different purposes, different ages, have made it work and are provided by our HRB regulations. They follow the rules and they obey the guidelines. The applicant has installed the hood without approval and has yet to fix the situation, even given a vast amount of time that has already been allotted to him. If you were to allow this hood, Mr. May, it would go against twenty years plus of the regs that many other businesses downtown have so graciously complied with. And we're going to move on to exhibit C, which will have an impact. COA, this application stipulates from Junior Sarek to have his hood brought up at one twenty North Third Street. You also wanted his hood to be brought out externally, the same application that Ron made of footwork as well. The hood that Mr. Sarek was referencing was the hood installed by Ron May that was installed without HRB approval. And note the following on the application act quote. The owner wishes to install a kitchen, a kitchen hood on the exterior of the building. Please note that the HVAC unit the applicant is referencing was installed without approval and is being dealt with currently. All other applicants on Third Street were made to install their, on that particular block, were made to install their HVAC units internally and tasked by previous HRB boards. This was so the mechanical systems would not be visible from a public way. If this were to be approved, many other businesses would apply for their HVAC and vents to also be installed externally. Please note also that this application was denied. I have at least six other businesses that have contacted me regarding the situation, stating if you allow this vent to remain and don't have swift action to rectify the situation, they will also be applying to move their hood vents and HVAC vents externally. This is because they believe if one person is allowed to do this without approval, then they feel they should be able to have the same to do that as well. This decision goes so much harder than one particular business or situation.
Who are the six businesses?
I'm not allowed to get ahead of it.
This is public. This is public, so I would think that I would say, if you're, if you're, if you're using this.
Not as she's, if she's had a phone call, a complaint with somebody, that doesn't have to be shared.
Well, then I don't believe that six people know.
The evidentiary rules don't fully apply in that way. I mean, you've presented, I mean, you've presented hearsay from what Logan Spalding's allegedly told you. You've presented hearsay from what the engineer allegedly told you, which is not included in his written report, which was presented.
When are other people allowed to speak?
We're, we're doing this.
So it affects the entire downtown, basically the heart of the historic district, and all of the people who have worked so diligently and have complied with those laws thus far. So my job isn't an easy one. I think we all can recognize that quite accurately. And despite the fact of how much I absolutely truly love what I do, and how much I try to dedicate and be as detailed as I can to everything, the one thing that I pride myself is the fact that I can't play with the regs. I can't give exceptions, and it's just something I'm not allowed to do within my job. It's not because I don't want to help people. It's not because I don't want to ensure that people can get certain things that they need for their business. But my job and the job of the historic review board is to follow those regulations that are written and presented before you as they exist currently. And when you break those regulations, that must be rectified. We have to consider everyone else, all four hundred and eighty other buildings that own property in the district that are abiding by the rules. We can't make exceptions. So my job, nor this position, allows us, any of us, to be able to do that tonight. The applicant may also make various insinuations that the hood had to be installed internally and had to be placed where it exists now for the business and his building. Again, I'm going to repeat some of the facts that I've already mentioned, but I would like to reiterate those because we have many other businesses or several other companies that were able to make it work. And if they were able to make it work, I don't see why we can't have some form of compromise with this particular institution as well. So these businesses have abided by the rules and have done all the things that have stayed with multiple different designs, different ages, different functions, different reasons, and different types of businesses completely. They were all allowed to comply, and they were able to comply. And let's take a look at exhibit E. So this is the engineer's conclusion from rural engineering, and I quote unquote, it is in the engineer's opinion that alternate methods of installation could have been utilized.
Didn't he say what they were?
Yes. This report was emailed to you in advance of the historic review board meeting?
Yeah, five minutes.
You, do you not review it since then?
I have.
Okay.
It is clear from a professional engineer that he has evaluated the situation that Mr. May could have had his hood installed internally. It absolutely could have been done differently. So what I'm asking for tonight is that you consider all the evidence that's basically before you, because of the facts that are presented and because of the evidence that you have. It's very clear that the applicant in consideration tonight had a disregard for the HRB regulations with installing the hood that we have in Washington. And in doing so, he simultaneously disregarded all the other business owners that are downtown that are abiding by the rules and have been made to do their bits internally for the past twenty years. So I'm asking you please not to consider exceptions in this case. With this decision, there isn't really room for that. There are twenty-plus years of those regs that have been upheld, and I'm asking you to consider doing that tonight. I also ask that you do consider it has been eight months since the applicant has not complied and had that particular citation issued in exhibit A. Without swift action and swift resolution, we are just going to have many other business owners downtown that are not happy with the situation that is incurred. So please consider long-term ramifications of this and the decision, and please understand that we have proved that the applicant had multiple options of where the hood could have been placed internally. Please understand that although society and the world right now isn't necessarily allowing for business to be run smoothly for various other situations, allowing any form of exception with this would be extremely detrimental to how HRB would be able to handle issues of non-compliance within the future.
Rochelle, can I ask you, was Mr. Sarek's application denied based on those same guidelines?
Those exact same guidelines. So he was denied to do the exact same thing.
And that was for Catholic, the Catholic pre-gradual agreement?
So an engineer that the city hired said that, you just said multiple options were available. Those were your exact words, multiple?
Yes.
Okay.
I see four on his board.
Yeah, there is that, or it didn't have.
Okay. Here's what I would, I would challenge each and every one of you to do. You're not engineers. Maybe you are. I don't know. I'm not. But I've been in construction a long time, and if any of you can figure out how to do it, then I'll do whatever you say. But in the meantime, it can't be done. I don't care, I don't care if fifty engineers told you that. I don't care if five hundred engineers told you that. You can not go through the center of that building and still be able to use the second floor. It is an impossibility. And if he said that, he's wrong. Keep in mind also, he did tell me we don't even need a hood. And that is the.
I was just reading from his report that we sent you in advance, so. I'm not making any of this up.
Well, I'm not making it up either. He said, I don't even think you all need a hood.
Is that, and can you point to in the, in the report where he says that?
I'm calling. I'm gonna put it self on.
Well, the fact that the engineer said that you don't need a hood, I mean, that doesn't really apply to what we're considering here, which is a breach of HRB rules with a mechanical system on the outside building. The fact that you don't need a hood may suggest that, you know, you could tear it out and do something, I guess, with a circulation type hood inside. I'm sure that's what he's referring to.
No, except that type of, that type of equipment that has no grease laden possibility of fire, because we don't have fryers.
Okay, but I think what the code is, and if you don't have fryers, you have electric and not gas equipment. Is that correct?
No, no, if that were the case, we would not need a hood. But it is gas, and it is, my opinion from everything that I have read, that you do need a hood. And my engineer has said that you do need a hood. But I just, I find the inconsistencies blaring that.
Well, you know, of course, Mr. May, the only thing we have to go by here is what his conclusion is that we have, and it doesn't state, I guess maybe what the mayor has in his pocket, it may state that the engineer said that it didn't need a hood.
Of the engineer that you.
Right, exactly. But that's not what we have in front of us, and I think it's still irrelevant. The fact that even if he did say that it didn't need a hood, that doesn't really apply itself to the problem.
Except for it would make him not qualified to make that judgment.
So you're saying that that would disqualify our engineers to make that judgment?
Correct. A hundred percent. One hundred percent.
Can I say something?
Sure.
In this, okay. According, according to what we read here in this package stuff, based on the facts that presented in front of us, this should be denied. Your request should be denied. However, I'd like to, your attorney said before, you know, we want, we need the businesses downtown, we want the businesses downtown. And if there's any other way that we could compromise, you get on board with us. Any way we could compromise, or maybe even give you time to go through the proper channels, rectify what needs to be done, and then go ahead and start operating the business. But as this sits here right now, it's a total denial, I would think. I'm just speaking for me.
Sure, sure, sure.
But this, it doesn't say that we don't want your business downtown and we don't need your business downtown. But you've been totally disregarding everything that's the proper procedures. Now, if you were willing to come on board and work out some other kind of resolution, and if we were willing to give you time to do that and do it the right way, and then go ahead and make this thing work. Because right now, I can't speak for everybody else on council, but right now, the issue here is that you just totally disregard the rules and regulations that go along with the city.
I respect and appreciate what you said.
So now, if there is some kind of way we can compromise and work this thing out, and you get on board and do the things the right way, let's make this thing happen. Now, Mayor may have, he may have a suggestion for either, because he's, I'm sure he's on the same heart too, that he doesn't want to put unnecessary hardship on any business that wants to, you know, contribute to the, to the ambiances your attorneys in the bar town.
Are you going to come and visit our business?
No comment right now, I'm just trying to get to his ears. I've had so much of this, I'm not in really good mood to be thinking about.
Neither am I.
But what I'm saying, and I'm sure everybody here on the council would, would, would love to have your business downtown. But you're, you're being totally disrespectful, totally out of order, and totally not following the rules that need to be followed. So if I was to vote on this right now, on the procedures that you've got in front of us, I would say I'd vote for a denial. But I'd also, on the other hand, if there's any way we could work some kind of compromise or work out some kind of strategy to where you could do things the right way and get back on track, if the city was willing to give you time to do this, and you would do it, then I think everybody here on the council would probably go along with it.
Yeah, and I said that when I was at the HRV meeting, and I said that I would work with you to do whatever you.
But, but, you know, as it stands right now, the issue here before us now is a council. I'd say it's a plain denial.
Well, let's figure out how to make this work.
Well, let's go on, let's deal with this issue first.
I know there's some people, gentlemen, gentlemen, you want to comment?
Well, then, yeah, at this point, I do feel compelled to just make a few comments, and my comments are going to be geared mostly to Rochelle and what she's been through. And I just think we need to look at it in her eyes and the city's eyes, because that's what we had to do today. And you know, guys, that HRD, we've been through this. We only deal with appearances in the district, we don't deal with the insides. If you have a situation inside that's yours, it's not ours, it's yours, okay? And, and just because, you know, you're in historic district, it doesn't mean you can't make alterations to the building. You can do that anytime you want to, but we have a process here called a COA. And if you go through that at the proper times, you don't, we're not sitting here doing this tonight, guys. And this is what this young lady's been trying to get you to do, Ron. And it just, you just won't cooperate with us. You know, I have a lot of property down there too. What if everybody did this, put us through this every time some change has to go in the historic district? And, you know, and being in the district, you're supposed to be insured that alterations, additions, and any demolition is in keeping with the special character of our downtown. And this happens, once again, with the COA. We did not even, we just looked, just don't notice that, we didn't pay a bit of attention to it. Why? And we all know that if you're going to deal in an old building and you're dealing with preservation, that you're going to spend more money. It's going to be more labor intensive. We all know that process in an old building is just part of the process. It's just the way it works. And our guidelines are not here to make people mad, they're here to protect our community. And they're also here to provide that my kids and my grandkids have this beautiful town that you guys wanted to locate in for some reason. I can't figure that one out, why would you want to come here if we don't want to live with our rules? But it's a beautiful downtown, and I want my children and my grandchildren to enjoy it too. I love it, I'm passionate about it, and I definitely want your business to open. I love, I live downtown, I want to go downtown to have dinner, I like doing that. But I don't like being, abusing our system. And that's really all I have to say, I'm sorry about that. But I do want your business to work. I'm not here to stop your business, how can I do that? But how, I want to put it in your court, sir, you tell us how we can do that. How can we do that and still keep our Historic Review Board together?
I've read, and I can't remember where, do you have that that we looked at where you put a shroud around it? And, and I think that that is, and that's not, I mean, that's a book that we got from.
But that's not permitted in our guidelines.
It's in your guidelines.
On the roof.
I think it's in the guidelines to screen what's, equipment is on this roof mount, but I don't think it applies to anything that's just on the roof. Any kind of commercial exhaust and things like that, that's what this is.
Yeah, I remember seeing it, and it was in the illustration that showed the example where someone on the ground.
That was HVAC, like for residential structures that are on the ground, we often screen those with like big fences or landscaping.
It doesn't make the designation. And if that's a clarification issue, I guess that's something that we have to hash out.
The guy, and what this hood is being considered is newbie one, two, and three, which are on the application, two of which are written, which say that he doesn't meet those requirements.
I know there's a number of people here, we've been at this a long time. Let me speak if you want to speak, but you have to speak to this application, and I'm going to give you two minutes if you want to speak to this application. But if you're just going to stand up here and trash the system or trash HRV, I'm not going to allow that to tie up this agenda. This agenda is about this application, so.
I'll take five minutes first. Okay, so would you?
Would you please give us your name?
Yes, my name is Kristin Gerter, I'm going to be the bar manager manager hopefully if this place ever gets opened. I have four kids, and a lot of people behind this are really counting on this place to open. I respect the fact that this is a historical place and you're trying to uphold something that has been here for twenty years, after sixty years. This is 2020. At some point, maybe the HRV could reevaluate how they do things moving forward, with still being able to allow modern day rooms to accommodate with, I get it, I'm old school, I'm military background, my kids say yes, ma'am, they have chores, they put their shoes. I totally understand a background of being able to have a beautiful, small, small town city with historic things to be able to look at that somebody is not going to come in and want to destroy. I can't speak on what he has or hasn't done, but my question, one of them, is how could it be done by CO and HRV compliance at the same time? Because what I'm seeing is that there is no common grounds for both to be done at the same time. So I feel like that is about the only solution to everybody's problem, to include my doors and everything between.
The answer to that question would be from the engineer's report, if he had applied upfront and designed it with the HRV guidelines and question, it could have been done, just what all these other restaurants have done downtown. They, they have designed their kitchens to be in compliance with the regs, and that's why they're exhausted.
So in these current businesses that she speaks of, they are opening and they are running, and I, I can't fathom why any business is going to go tear down things and spend millions or hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe not millions, but hundreds of thousands.
You're charging your costs.
Right.
Go ahead.
That, just to tear something down, just because if, if, I guess it could, if they really wanted to, but why, anyone in their right mind, I'm just basing it off the common sense of this town.
Well, I think the point is that if he'd done this in the beginning, he wouldn't have spent thousands of dollars putting a hood that's in the alley that we're talking about whether or not he could be.
Right, I'm saying the businesses that are already in place that she speaks of, that they are reapplying to do something differently to a business that is already up and running. You already have people that are paying taxes, that are a part of the community already.
The point, the point of their conversation is, is if you don't hold him to the same standards you held us to, then all rules are off.
Right.
That's, that's their comments.
For twenty or thirty years, or, and at what point, all I'm asking is, at what point do we, do we modernize a historic place? At what point can we say, like, we have to have a common ground for everyone for it to be fair on this side and this side?
Your time is expired.
Okay. If I can try to help answer a couple of those questions, and I'm sorry, Joe, you want to go first?
I was just going to say, we, they have not worked out a problem. If you do it, go through the channels to do it. So we, we didn't make any preparation upfront to make that work, and that's, we do it all the time.
Practical, I mean, there are some practical applications as to why these other businesses would try to reapply to get that done, because what they had to do within their, within their constraints of money, you know, it is expensive. I understand that, it would be expensive to go through the center of the building. It's, it is an expensive endeavor to turn a historic building into something that wasn't designed to be. But that's really what you're trying to do, so.
So to accomplish getting it on the inside, you're going to have to destroy most of that building to do that, and that's the part of the bottom line makes no sense.
I don't agree with the fact that they destroyed most of the building. So, so that is expensive in order to get that done, but these other businesses also, in doing that, they have to do it as cheaply as they can, okay, so to try to survive.
I'm talking on a reconstructive basis.
Well, we're talking about this vent.
But actually, David, it was more expensive to go out than it would have been to go through.
And, and see, that's where I don't really understand the argument. So it was more expensive to do it against the rules than it is to do it according to the HRV, but, but I also understand your force-based insurance. I've had the same problems, Ron, with the buildings we're building. It was really expensive to run the ductwork to where we had to run it to avoid coming through where it was visible by the alley, and it was very expensive to do that.
And if we would have had new construction available to us.
I understand.
We would have said, so it's completely apples and orange.
Just stating, I'm trying to answer the young lady's question.
You never said it would have been cheaper if you done it upfront and worked with HRV.
Because my architect said it could not go through.
You said that, right.
Yeah.
So, so I can, so y'all know a little bit too. The rules of the Historic Review Board are governed by the Department of Interior. They set the standards of these rules. They are not just local rules that we make up, that we made up sixty years ago, forty years ago, five years ago. The Department of Interior dictates these rules to have a historic district and all of the other things that go along with qualifying historic districts. There's tax credits that are available because of the historic district, and all that is governed by the federal government and the Interior Department of Interior. So this, I'm not people that understand that we don't make these rules up just arbitrarily. These come through the Department of Interior.
Are these rules laws or?
This is, this is governed by an ordinance, this is HRV and the KRS governs HRV. So there are two, there's local laws and state laws and federal guidelines that come into play here.
So I guess if I could finish that point, you know, it is expensive to do what we're asking you to do. It is, it's expensive to do what we've asked the other business owners to do downtown. But, and if it's impossible to make that happen in a historic building, then you don't do it. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, is if it can't be done, then you don't do it. You don't do it against the HRV just because, because it can't be done. So maybe it's the wrong building. Now, Ron, we want your business, we want your business downtown, we want to encourage that. But we can't also encourage, you know, the rules being broken for one person and then not allowing the rest of the businesses to do the same. So to try to answer part of your question also, why these other businesses would apply to do something after the fact, is because when they went in to do it originally, they had to do it under money constraints. So that may have meant that they didn't get that big enough vent that they would have liked to have had to cook at the volumes that they would like to cook at. So if we say, okay, Mr. May, you can go ahead and do what you want to do, and they would go back and reapply to install a larger hood that would happen to maybe run on the outside of the building and then destroy the character of that particular building. So that's, does that make sense?
Yes, the only part that doesn't make sense is the small part of the character that you're losing on the outside of the building, we're taking it on the interior, what you would have to do to destroy the character on the inside. The amount of it, in my mind, common sense, if you'd been there to see it, it's about eighty twenty. And it, it's just disturbing to know that, like they're saying in the pictures from the back alley, if you actually look at this, like you, you actually got to kind of try to look for it, to be looking for it, you know what I mean, to even notice that it's there versus you're taking it up through, you're destroying the whole second floor of the mezzanine, and that's the part that, it's just, I mean, if it comes down to it, it does, but common sense just tells me that it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Okay.
And I, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, when you have historical property, you can do anything you want to for the inside.
That's right.
We don't govern anything related to the interior.
Okay, so it's an exterior where everybody sees it. Now, with tonight, at some point, we're going to be looking at some certificates of appropriateness. And one of the things that we try and pride ourselves with is being fair and consistent. And that's what we're basically telling you, these other people that were denied, that we're being fair and we're being consistent. That's what we're trying to do here this evening. Okay.
Okay, two minutes, would you?
All right.
Name?
Barbara.
Your last name?
So Barbara Ritchie-Plastow. So the, the, the reason that HRV did not deny our approval is because two people, the two men that are on the committee, said that they thought that the codes and things need to be reviewed, that we need to think twice about not letting the business open, and that we need to work together to work and get it open while we're solving the problem. So two of the men on the committee, that you guys can all see that because it was recorded, they voted to open, they voted to give them permission to open because they think that maybe the rules that you guys have followed for the past twenty, thirty years need to be updated to her standard. Because a lot of people don't want to, especially if it's like an apartment building inside and you're having to pull the expense, he has an apartment building upstairs, which the Egress would have been destroyed, so it would have lost the upstairs apartment completely, which is another source of income, that would have been gone. And I'm sure other people who have beautiful interiors don't want to destroy the interior. Historically, you've destroyed much more by putting a vent through the interior than the exterior. Also, they have agreed, and they said during the meeting, and they said, we will work with you to cover it. Ron has long-term plans of putting a covered porch just like next door, we totally cover. So if they would work together, I know it's backwards, he should have done it differently, and, you know, maybe he's going to have to do a better job of getting permission. So how about if he goes ahead and gives you a permission to cover it by doing an upstairs porch or put, you know, some kind of a beautiful like trellis where a greary could grow, which would be much prettier than it is right now, seems to me, and that's what the HRV voted for in the meeting, two to two, voted, let's work with him, let's try to make it open. Otherwise, you're going to lose a business downtown, and a whole lot of people are going to lose a job. And he pays a ton of money in taxes. So I think you still want those taxes, otherwise you're going to have another boarded up, empty building downtown instead of a beautiful business, where what we have seventeen people waiting to go to work, and some of them are here to hide.
That's, that's your two minutes.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Gemma Landello, I moved here ten years ago. I don't own a business, but, and I've never been to a city council meeting. I have heard conversations from different places that I've lived, from the difficulties in working with signs, you know, there's rules and regulations everywhere, and they're good. I actually, last year, wanted to have a mural printed, painted. Let's have a mural in Bardstown. You know, I'm from Philadelphia, we have murals everywhere, and they're beautiful. So I get what's going on to some degree. I also get what Ron's trying to do. One point five million, we need another restaurant, he's got an Airbnb, they're bringing people into this community. Let's work together. Some of the mistakes that the business people make, they don't know, they don't understand. I blame some of the realtors, when you sell them a property, there has to be a conversation. There's got to be more conversations, because they're building, they're buying these expensive buildings, not really fully recognizing all that needs to happen when they purchase. They've got capital investment in a, in a piece of real estate, and then, you know, you go to, you go to build a restaurant or an Airbnb, I mean, I just can't believe the money that is spent, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. Barstown is a beautiful community. Since COVID, I have walked the streets of Barstown more than I did the last eight years. It's a great place to go. I know every part of Barstown now, my dog and I, walking around because I can't go anywhere else. There's a lot of people that'll, that still wanna spend a lot of money in this town. They're gonna spend a lot of money in this town, but we need to find a better way to cooperate, to communicate. Because some of the mistakes that were made, he's a business owner, they're trying to do five or six or seven things at one time. They don't have the money and the expertise to hire people to say, tell me what to do, tell me what to do, tell me what to do. Yes, they're at fault. They do make mistakes. It's not right. But please, you know, I don't know how to solve it. I have no idea how to solve it. I just wanna say, have some empathy for these people that wanna spend a lot of money, that wanna empower your community. I wanna go to the restaurant. I wanna stay at the Airbnb with my families. You know, it's gonna happen, but having a better way of making all this happen, I think, would make everybody happy.
And that, and that's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, you got any suggestions? Well, I'd let Audrey's give us what options we can take at this point. I think we've heard enough discussion from everyone this evening, so I agree with you.
I, I think I see three options, Mayor. You know, option one is to approve the application as presented and leave the ductwork on the exterior, which is what Mr. May has proposed. And that would be the first option. The second option would be to just deny the application entirely. That, that's certainly an option the council can take. That doesn't really leave Mr. May a path forward to come into compliance outside of the, he's not in compliance, and I guess he could circle back to H R B with some sort of other plan. But that doesn't really sort of resolve anything for us here tonight. The third option is that we could approve the installation of the exhaust fan with some sort of conditions. So, that could be, you know, I, I don't know that, looking at the regulations, that screening the entirety is, is appropriate. Something like that could be considered, but I don't know that our regulations permit it in the way that it's installed currently. I know that we've certainly screened roof units and things like that. But the, the option I think would be most appropriate, you know, and of course, the council certainly is free to take whatever option they choose, would be to approve installation of the fan with some kind of conditions. For example, you know, that we could say it has to vent through the, through the roof. That it, you know, he has to consider the feasibility of that and present to us in a certain amount of time, you know, what timeline it would take to do that, you know, if that, if it's, you know, in compliance with code and things like that. We could set a time limitation for how long to comply or how long to return to us with the plan to, to go forward with that. So, I mean, I don't wanna put times, but for example, we could say within sixty days, Mr. May will present to us, you know, alternate plans to move the hood. If it's in compliance with code enforcement, that would, of course, had that been done in the beginning, we would be able to look at those plans and he could work with Logan at the same time to see how feasible it is to put it through the roof, for example. If it truly is, as Mr. May states, some kind of issue with the face, then Logan could consider that and there could be alternate things considered. But that would be something he could present and then give him a time period to complete the work after he presents plans, something along those lines. So, we could certainly put those kind of conditions on, on the, the application. I mean, I'd be happy to answer questions from the council about sort of any thoughts on any conditions, if that's something they wanna consider.
I guess one question, option number three, which you're proposing, to approve the application with, with, with conditions. Would that not be, wouldn't we have to deny it with conditions?
Well, in essence, it's, it's kind of, it's almost like a semantics thing, right? So, in essence, we're approving that he could put an exhaust system in the building, but the exhaust system has to comply with X, Y, and Z. So, as, in, in theory, as installed, it is not in compliance, right? So, we would say, look, you can have an exhaust system, obviously, that, I think we all understand that some sort of exhaust system is apparently necessary. I, I don't know a lot about pizza ovens, but some sort of exhaust system is necessary to safely operate the restaurant, right? I think that that's pretty clear, I hope, to everyone. You know, but we could say, we, we approve you to install an exhaust system with the condition that, you know, it must be, you know, vented through the roof, for example, or vented in a way that it, you know, I don't know what other option, there were several options that the, the engineer presented. Depending on, some of them, he seemed to think were less feasible than others. But, you know, vented through the roof, for example, is the one I keep coming back to, because I know that's the one that other restaurants have done. Vent it through the roof will give you sixty days to consult with, you know, your engineer, consult with Logan to see if it's feasible and see what, you know, come back to either the council or back to Rocher or back to me. I'm happy to discuss it with them, to see what it would take to comply and then a timeline for the work to be completed.
I'm just comparing the two options that we have as far as, I mean, it looked like to me, if we deny it, so then Mr. May has to conform to an, an interior type of event anyway.
So, if we deny it, so here's, I guess, if we deny the application completely and just say, nope, sorry, you know, you cannot have your, your vent hood where it is, then Mr. May has two options, right? One is to appeal to Circuit Court at that point, or I guess the alternate option would be in essence to bring back to us, sort of in his own way, with conditions to say, okay, fine, you all don't like, you know, my hood doesn't meet approval. Let me talk to my engineer and come back to you with an alternate plan to come into compliance. So, it's almost two sides of the same coin if you follow the council and Dums. Sure, you know, one is us saying, here's how we want you to comply, versus us saying, well, you're not in compliance, and then it puts the burden on him to come back to us to comply. Does that make sense?
Could I propose to just screen it, so that way we can get open and keep making more money for the city and more taxes? And then that way we're in compliance with what's in there already, screening it and make it look nice.
Well, I, I would think that, I, I can't speak to this, but I would think that if we, for example, approve it with conditions, you would open and then the condition would be within six months, you know, or something, to, to come into compliance.
But I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but if that was the case, I mean, if you were to, you know, I don't know if we could agree to.
We can't give him the certificate of occupancy.
Well, I can't, I'm talking about with his screening option. I, I think that would probably have to go back through the H R B with another application, I would think. And you'd have to present what it looked like, and then the H R B would have to approve, and that.
That's not gonna be something they would accept based on the guidelines, but. It's not, it's not been.
Which one are you talking about?
Wouldn't they have sixty days to keep trying to come up with something?
Well, I mean.
I mean, to be consistent, to be consistent with what we have asked all the other, in recent times, I mean, I can't speak for what happened down on the other street. That could have been, different rules were in place back then, or different group was in place, okay, I can't speak to that. I can only speak to what's been done recently. To be consistent, which I think you've heard quite often from the council this evening, we've got to ask you to comply the same way we've asked your neighbors to comply. And, and so, to what Audrey just said, I mean, could we, if we were to say, Ron, you could, you, we're gonna approve you to put this exhaust system in, but it's gonna have to be in accordance with the H R B guidelines, which means it has to go internally and out through the roof and give you a certain amount of time to comply. We let you open, but give you a certain amount of time to comply. Is that something that you are open to? Because otherwise, our choice is pretty much either yes or no, and I don't think it's gonna be a yes.
I actually said that exact thing when we were on the Zoom meeting with the jury last week.
But I understand, it's not gonna be just put lattice work to hide it, you're not gonna put some faux wood structure. It's gonna have to be engineered and designed by, just like Mr. Hargrove said, you're gonna have to get a structural engineer, you're gonna have to get an H D A C engineer like Mr. Hargrove to submit a plan, you know, hire him, design it. And we give you a certain amount of time period, what, and of course, Logan has to approve it and other people have to approve it, et cetera. We give you a certain amount of time period to do that. Is that something you'd be open to? And you have to do these other things that Logan's already pointing out. I don't know about those thirteen things.
They're done. Those are done. He said that they're done.
So, if we were to say, you know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about, because you'd have to shut down for a time period to do it once you got it designed and all that, which I'm thinking January, February is a good time for that, because that's the slowest time of the year. But give you three months to hire your architect and engineer and then give you another three months to complete the project. Is that something that you would be open to? I think that's the type of motion that.
And so, that's kind of what I'm proposing, Mr. May, is, you know, within, within ninety days, you'll come back to Rocher or me. I, I certainly can't approve, or, you know, but at least present plans that, you know, seem to comply, and, you know, we can sort of review those. And then within six months, I'm just making up timelines, you know, six months, you'll have completed the project, you know, barring, you know, something.
So, are we applying for plans that move the H R B internally?
Right, that's what I'm saying. They have to, to be consistent with what we've already done with your neighbors, it has to be that way. And that's how I'm thinking. I'm not speaking.
And that would in theory leave you open, you know, for, you know, as busy as anybody is right now, I guess, but, you know, leave you open for a period and then.
This way, you could get open, get on your feet, start making money, but you would be actually complying, just like the other neighbors' restaurants that have done the same thing in that same block.
One other question, with the neighbors that you keep referring to, do they have gas lines? Do they have the same internal structure that we do that is?
Well, we don't deal with the inside buildings. I don't know what the inside of the building looks like, because we don't, look at that.
How does it get fresh air?
What do you mean?
Well, it's, it's exhausted. It's exhausting wood from the kitchen. Where's the fresh air unit that pulls fresh air back in? Is it on the roof?
Usually, those type of systems is incorporated in with the ductwork system. That's actually part of the duct system, is that it brings air in.
Okay.
So, Audrey, you wanna articulate?
Oh, Lord, okay.
Rocher, do you have anything else to add?
I just wanted to make sure for our regulations, if the hood was moving internally, that's what H R B is wanting.
Correct, and, and, and Mr. May, I hope that this, you know, that you've learned from this, that we do require any kind of exterior changes to your buildings. Hopefully, going forward, we'll be able to work on these in advance rather than trying to deal with them on the back end. I, I think that someone, if, if there's a council member who wants to put forward a motion, I think we could approve the installation of an exhaust system with the conditions that it be moved inside the building. And within ninety days, Mr. May will present to Rocher, to the, to the Historic Preservation Coordinator, plans of some sort to move it inside, and those will be staff approved. And then, within six months, the exhaust system work will be completed to be moved inside the building per the Historic Review Board regulations.
And the exterior would be removed.
And the exterior would be removed, yes.
Audrey, just worry about the language a little bit and saying approved, and what other businesses you say. I think we, again, today's the one, I think we might have to deny it with conditions moving forward in order to keep the same presence. I think it's an additional approval.
It is a conditional approval, because he could have an exhaust, he would have to apply for an exhaust system period. If he was putting it on the roof, or he's putting it on the back of the building, he has to apply for the exhaust system. So, we're applying, we're approving that he can install an exhaust system, but the condition is that the one he has is not acceptable, therefore, it has to be moved inside the building, be following council.
Yes, that's what'll make sure that it looks the same for everybody.
Right, and, 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 yes, so it is a conditional approval with the conditions to be met.
Mayor, but it, it's.
Let me just say something. So, Ron, that, that would be, you know, we'd have to get a report back from you in ninety days from the date of this decision, that you have hired a structural engineer or engineer in good faith. You gotta show us some good faith effort here that you're going to apply. And then, then assuming that all gets approved, Logan and us, Logan on the inside and us on the outside, then we would give you another, is it three months enough time to complete it?
I don't know. It may be. It may take sixty days.
I'd say six months.
Six months. I don't know.
So, that would mean, that would mean you have three months to submit the plans to us and six months to complete it. That'd get you to.
I think that's a fair amount.
That'd get you to June.
And, and the unit on the roof, depending on how it comes out on the roof, right, that would be part of the staff approval. It may have to be screened, depending on how, you know, I don't know where it's gonna show on the roof, depending on what.
Anything on the roof has to be screened.
Right, if it's invisible.
So, is that motion sound fair to you?
It does.
So, Mayor, allow me to.
Did you get that?
Mayor, allow me to make this motion on this conditional approval on COA dash twenty one thirty seven, that we would issue a conditional approval with Ron coming back in ninety days with the, with the structural, I mean, with the engineer's report on how he's gonna do this. And then, with, with our approval then, along with Logan's following and H R B's approval, staff approval, whatever, and then allow another six months to have it completed. If he can agree to those terms, then I'd make a motion to make a conditional.
Councilman, can I be clear, six months in addition to the ninety days or six months total?
Six months in addition to the ninety days.
So, you're giving him nine months.
Nine months additionally, so that gets you down to three to June.
If he, if you feel comfortable with that, Ron?
I do, Bill. Thank you.
Yes, to be moved internal, yes.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion?
Can I amend it just real quick, or Al, for you, a friendly amendment, that the exterior be removed.
The exterior got to be removed?
Once the interior is placed, the exterior will be removed.
Will it work for you, Ron?
It will, Bill.
We're counting on you.
One more comment, please. Please, I'm begging you, do what we're saying we're doing here, so the Historic Review Board still is a nice board here that does their things for the right reasons. Please, just please do this. Please.
And Ron, even if you want to paint a door, you have to get it approved, let them color it. Because we don't wanna shit you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motions carried. So, thank you all for the chance to sit over here.
Twenty one twenty-three, Jacob Hall, applicant owner, request to install landscaping at two oh nine West Flagey. Recommendation, approval to install proposed landscaping. COA twenty one twenty-four, President Pat Hagan, applicant owner, request to add a front porch step at two fifteen East Flagey Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the front porch step as proposed with the following conditions. Conditions, the handrail for the steps will be staff approved. COA twenty ninety-eight, Summer Arling House, applicant owner, request to install landscaping at one twin south, one ten South First Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed landscaping. COA twenty one twenty-six, Summer Arling House, applicant, Bourbon Capital Brewing, owner, request to install landscaping at one twelve West Flagey Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install proposed landscaping. COA twenty one twenty-seven, Summer Arling House, applicant, Bourbon Capital Brewing owner, request to install outdoor seating at one twelve West Flagey Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install. COA twenty one twenty-eight, Bill and Sabre Mattingly, applicant owners, request to add sidewalk at one oh seven West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed sidewalk with the following conditions. Conditions, the sidewalk will match the pre-approved driveway. It will have a stamped border that consists of one brick and the inside of the sidewalk will be swept to finish. COA twenty one twenty-nine, Bill and Sabre Mattingly, applicant owners, request to add shutters at one oh seven West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed shutters. COA twenty one thirty, Bill and Sabre Mattingly, applicant owners, request to add flower boxes at one oh seven West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed flower boxes. COA twenty one thirty-one, Chris Simpson, applicant owner, request to add storm windows at one fourteen East Brusheer Street. Recommendation, approval to install the new proposed storm windows. COA twenty one thirty-two, Chris Simpson, applicant owner, request to replace some of the windows at one fourteen East Brusheer Street. Recommendation, approval to replace the proposed windows. COA twenty one thirty-three, Chris Simpson, applicant owner, request to reconstruct the porch at one fourteen East Brusheer Street. Recommendation, approval to rebuild the porch as proposed. COA twenty one thirty-four, Chris Simpson, applicant owner, request to add a new garage door at one fourteen East Brusheer Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed garage door with the following condition. Conditions, any changes to the garage door will be staff approved. COA twenty one thirty-five, Bullets Winery and Bistro, Ron May, applicant owner, request to keep speakers that were installed without approval at one twenty-four North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to keep the installed speakers with the following conditions. Conditions, the approval is for the design of the speakers only, and the speakers must meet the City of Barstown regulations and ordinances regarding the time they can operate and decibel level.
All right. We have recues on COA twenty one twenty-six and COA twenty one twenty-seven. David, you wanna recuse yourself and we'll take those up? Okay, I need a motion then to approve COA twenty dash one twenty-six and COA twenty dash one twenty-seven. There's no additions. I'm motion two.
So much.
Motion by Councilwoman Hart and a second by Councilwoman Williams. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, keep it like David. Okay. Then we'll need a motion to approve the balance of the COAs as read, summaries read by city attorney with conditions. Some of them there. read by city attorney with conditions. So move there. Motion by Councilman Hibbs, is there a second?
I'll second, sir.
Second by Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion's carried. Thank you. All Next item, we have a donation request from Barstown Main Street. And I told Randy now that she didn't have to be here this evening, but the request, as you can see, is, as they've lost out of $40,000 of their budget due to the Arts of Craft Festival being canceled, and so they're trying just to keep the Main Street office open with a lot of restriction on how much time Randy's actually in the office and so forth. But they've asked us, we consider a $10,000 contribution to help them offset this $40,000 loss in revenue. We've got copies of the other donations we made.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Main Street's donation request. It's a very important organization to our downtown. And given the situation with COVID, I think we need to support that.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second. Aaron, do you have a, I don't know, what's the balance of our community?
Before this motion, I know it's 15 pounds.
Okay, so it is adequate, but okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion's carried. Thank Everybody had a chance to review our minutes of September 8th meeting. So we'll just approve them by unanimous consent. We need, Aaron, do you have anything to add on the financial report?
I do not. We're kind of, we have the audit presentation at the next council meeting.
That's right.
So if you have any questions, please register the audit, and if there's any questions for me, send them to me anytime. If you have any questions specifically for me, please, one of us for me, and I'll send them all, or if you have her contact information, or would like to speak to her directly.
All right. So we need, this is a second reading this evening on ordinance B 2020-12, which is our sign regulations related to schools and athletic campuses. Like Audrey to read that for us, and then we'll have a vote.
Summary of ordinance B 2020-12. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance style sign regulations. The City Council of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain that Chapter 98 Sign Regulations, Section 98.05, definitions of the Municipal Code be amended as set forth below campus. Add number one, a business situated on 50 or more acres of land comprised of two or more buildings for separate but related commercial purposes and so to I-2 according to the Joint City County Planning Commission zoning map, adding or to any school building or school athletic facility surrounding land, whether a public or private institution regardless of the number of acres of land which is being used as a school building and/or athletic facility. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict hereby to repeal to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force in effect following publication and summary as required by law. The summary was certified by Audrey L. Hayden, City Attorney.
Okay, we'll need a motion to approve this on second reading this evening, ordinance B 2020-12.
So move there.
Motion by Councilman Dome, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion? This is a second reading, so I'll ask you to respond individually. All in favor, respond aye, and I'll start with Councilman Hibbs.
Aye.
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 All right. Okay, thank you. Motion's carried. The next ordinance for our second reading this evening is ordinance number B 2040-13, is our property tax rate. And I know we had a hearing earlier, but I think we need to read this for our second reading again, and.
Sorry, you have to hear me read it again, Eric. I'm sorry.
It's been a while since we heard it.
I'll read it fast.
Ordinance number B 2020-13, property tax for, and ordinance amending and adopting as amended ordinance, ordinance levy and tax on property subjects taxed at the City of Barstown, fixing rates thereon and designating the funds and purposes for which expenditures are offered as of the fiscal year July 1st, 2023, June 30th, 2021. The City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows. One, that there be and hereby is levy the sum of .1790 cents on each $100 of real property subject to taxation, the sum of 1790 cents on each $100 of property subject to taxation, and the sum of 24 cents on each $100 of motor vehicle and watercraft subjects taxation in the City of Barstown for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020, June 30th, 2021. Two, all monies here and after collected for taxes due in the year 2020 through 2021 and all years prior thereto shall be allocated to the general fund for the general expense of city government, including but not limited to recreation, police, and fire protection, general government, and the maintenance of streets and highways. Three, collection of property tax bills of $10 or less may be waived by the chief financial officer. Four, all taxpayers whose taxes are not paid by the due date printed on the bill and/or by the 30th day after the mailing of the tax, but whichever is later, shall pay a penalty of 10% of the amount of taxes due and unpaid. In addition thereof, shall pay interest on the unpaid taxes at the rate of 1% per month or part thereof until paid. Five, the convenience fee of $2.95 or 3.5%, whichever is greater, will be levy on any credit card transaction payment for property tax bills. This ordinance shall be in full force upon its publication. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. This is a second reading. We need a vote on this second reading this evening. So I need a motion to approve ordinance B 2020-13 related to our property tax rates.
Go move.
Motion by Councilman Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Check. Are there any other discussion or questions?
I think it's worth, sorry, I mean, just, we covered this at length with the last meeting, but this, although it says a 4% increase, it's only a 4% increase due to the increase revenue, it's the taxpayers will not see an increased rate.
Unless their property was reassessed.
Unless their property is.
Rates, the same rate here, increases only aggregate increase of income based on the increased values of sale. Thank you.
And that we have nothing to do with the city school tax.
All the assessments. All of us have picked this up. All right, so we have a motion and a second, right? Okay, all in favor, soon as I say none, starting individually, the Councilman Dome's.
Aye.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Motion's carried. Aaron, do we, do we print our own tax bills? That's what I thought, so we can probably.
While we be getting all this together, I'll park us back roll from Barbara. We'll be in contact with our property tax officer and everything on hand and at least in the off schedule.
So they should get out in early October, probably.
I hope that, yes, before October 1st.
Okay, which is really a traditional time anyway, so.
I would need to repeat.
Okay. Thank you. Cemetery deeds, we have Sean, Sean Selet, Sean Selet, purchased two gray sites. We approve that by unanimous consent. I skipped over council members' comments. Anybody got anything else they'd like to bring before the council this evening?
Mayor, I don't want to prolong this. We're having a special meeting on the 29th.
Yes, on September 29th, 5 o'clock. It's just an appeal on a sign, sending on signs in the HRV district. I don't think there'll be anything like this evening.
Are you in a timeout there?
Yeah, 5 o'clock on September 29th.
Right, the reason I ask is because we're not going to be able to have a rep meeting Thursday, so I was going to see if we could maybe have the 6 o'clock, or maybe 5:30.
I think we'll probably need more than 30 minutes.
6 o'clock, that's Tuesday. Would that work for the other committee members?
That, that's fine with me. I was going to suggest the same thing to Gary. That's going to be my counsel comment.
Okay.
So we're going to have the Recreation Committee meet after our.
Your special meeting, so if there's anything that you want on that agenda, it has to be on the agenda, because we can't talk about anything.
Do we need to check?
That's right after our.
So it'll be at 6:00 PM on the 29th.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to check with Daniel on that first, do you think, or?
He said he ain't got what's good with him.
Okay.
30 minutes, well.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments or questions for the council members?
I just have a real quick, the Coalition has resumed meeting in person, and the Drug Coalition and Chief Mattingly has offered us hospitality at the Francis Liddell Meeting Room, so we've taken advantage of that space, and it's very nice, and we can socially distance very easily.
Good. Do you have a date for the next meeting?
A different pillar meets every Monday at noon.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Mayor, real quick, just want to give a quick update on the save the light bag program from Blessing Box Program that we have. Since 7:28, it's inception. There have been 62 $10 bags purchased and $75 bags purchased by, by the community. So just wanted to hats off to everybody involved, and thanks for what you've generously done.
Great. Good to know. I've got a couple of just little quick report outs. On the census, we have until the end of this month to complete the census, and at this current time, Nelson County is running at 77% completion rate, which is high related to the state as a whole, but it's still not, we want to get as much as we can. The city, we are reporting at a 74.4% rate, so that's still pretty good. Nelson County, that number they have, that put them in the 88 percentile of highest reporting of counties in the country at one point, a few weeks ago, where they were ranked like 88 of all counties reported. So, but we still need to get that out. It's very easy to do. You just go online, census 2020. I can play it online, so I can tell you, anybody in this room can play it online. So please do it, because it's so important. And I watched a video that I'm sure Coach Rowe and Bill Shackles have seen, that the Barstown School System put together on YouTube of the young students talking about the importance of the census and how it relates to funding for schools. And they, they basically are asking, everybody, make sure all these kids get counted. They also, we count, and this census is important to their education. So please do that. It's, it is very important. There's something like the average amount of federal dollars per resident of a county is like $2,000 per person per year, aggregate. So that's a lot of money, because there's always, you know, it's everything from social services to schools, funding to roads, unemployment, so forth. Every, every person counts is important. And speaking of kids, I get a lot of questions about Halloween. And our typical, our big community event, which is one that the city actually sponsored for many, many years, is apps, the Guthrie Center. Now, the Guthrie Center has graciously taken over sponsoring it and has local sponsors from the business community to handle it. They know that there's no way to safely have hundreds and hundreds of kids come there like they typically do, and parents. So they're working with our police department right now to establish a drive-through setup, where the businesses will have their tables set up, socially distanced apart, and they'll work on Direction 3, the parking lot there and around the building and so forth, where cars could go by these various stations and get the treats handed to them in a safe manner. So that, I think that's what's going to happen on Halloween at the Guthrie Center. I know some of the churches have canceled their trunk and treat deal. So that gets me to the, to the, just the traditional trick or treating. And my thinking, and that's where I want any feedback, I'm just, been thinking about this and looking at what other cities, I'm thinking, you know, schools are going, the kids are going to school, if their parents want to take them out trick or treating in a traditional way and leave it up to the residents to whether they participate, you know, because it doesn't appear to me that there is, you know, any real problem with social distancing, because the typical group of kids that come to the door is a family of kids. There's not like 50 kids showing up at one door from four or five different families and all that. So I think they can just, a decision on the part of the parents and residents on how they want to handle it that night, and let them, I don't know, Chief, you and Billy have any feedback on that at all?
I feel the same way. I think, you know, someone doesn't want to, it's maybe just keep their lights turned off and, and stay inside their home, and they want, it's maybe the better mindset if you so.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to encourage, obviously, kids typically wear masks, but they, a lot of them sometimes paint their faces. I mean, they, they should follow the guidelines of masks, and the people at home should do the same, have masks on when they treat the kids at the door. And I think if they do that, I don't think the problem will be exacerbated by that being allowed. So normally, I make decisions on what the time is, and if we don't have it on Sunday, and all that kind of stuff, but I wanted to run this by you all.
It's the Saturday, it's your duty.
I think so.
See if you all are comfortable with letting traditional trick or treating happen under these guides. And we'll put out a press release and stuff to that. All right.
Eric, can I ask one other thing? Back to the census, are we doing anything as far as trying to get any information out there, like through Barstown Cable or maybe PLG 13? We have.
We did post this stuff on Facebook and our website and that kind of stuff. I don't know about any crawling on PLG.
Joe, Jim.
I did an update on my Friday update, I mentioned it at that meeting, and I've been talking about it at other meetings. Hopefully, after tonight, they'll put something in the paper about it as well as those people watching this evening. It's more important.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Hannah's been working pretty well with us on that, getting that word out.
That's probably not going to be the headline of our meeting.
No, probably not. Halloween probably is. Unless there's anything else to come through the council, I'd ask for a motion for a done.
Go move, sir.
Motion by our Councilman Buckman, the second. Yes, you, Councilman Hibbs, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, we are adjourned.